Good evening. My name is Richard Burke and I'm President of the Twelton Valley Water District Board of Commissioners. I declare this board session to be open. The first item of business tonight will be reports by the Chief Executive Officer and management staff.
So as usual, we'll kick off the meeting with a safety moment, and I understand that Joel Carey is actually going to, from our Engineering and Operations Water Quality Division, is going to give the report this evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, Commissioner Burke, Management Staff. So I decided to utilize the safety minute to talk about winter preparedness for your home. timely subject as we're all approaching what will obviously be some cold weather this year. So, winter's almost here. As we all know, winter weather can wreak havoc on unprepared pipes. I think we see that all too often for our customers and in our system, hopefully none of your homes. Before you have an emergency, there are many precautions you can take now to help minimize impacts later. So, first one, disconnecting hoses and outside faucets, disconnecting your hoses from the outside faucets and making sure to insulate your hose bibs. A great reminder to prevent your pipes from freezing. Cover foundation vents and insulate pipes in unheated areas, maybe in your crawl space, things that are exposed to some of the winter weather we get. And last, know how to turn off your water in case of an emergency. That's a very big priority. The district obviously receives lots of calls during winter breaks when we are trying to respond rapidly to customers who have walls that are flooding. So, yes, know where that's at, whether it's below the sink or for your whole house. Two good points. Bottom line, be prepared and stay warm this winter. So do your best. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Joel. Several items to cover hopefully briefly this morning, this evening, but one item that wasn't on my prepared remarks is I want to take a moment to introduce Andrea Watson, our new Communications and Public Affairs Supervisor. She has been with us now, you keep coming back, it's like two weeks. That's awesome. No, we're thrilled to have her. She comes to us from the Reynolds-
She keeps coming back to work? That's a good thing, isn't it?
Yeah. Well, you know, it doesn't always work out that way. No, she's been a wonderful addition to the team already and comes to us from the Reynolds School District where she was Communications Manager for, how many years?
Fourteen years.
Fourteen years. So, a great addition to the TBWD team. We're thrilled to have her, and I know you'll be hearing more from her in the months and years to come. In terms of other updates with the district, first item is our payment provider, Paymentis update. The new payment system continues to be well received by the district's customers. Earlier this week, Andrew Carlstrom reported that we reached a major milestone with 20,000 customers now signed up using the online payment system. So it's a great step forward for us, and again, the feedback from both customers and staff continues to be very positive. And as I'd mentioned at the work session last week, we're now able to take online donations for the Customer Emergency Assistance Program. And so, again, we hope to see that program start to recover as those online payments start to come in.
I might just add that you can set it up so that when you pay your bill bi-monthly, it'll do an online donation at the same time. So you can just set it all up and walk away from it, and it just does it. And it did it successfully, even though I'm not very good at reading instructions.
And hopefully, it's much more intuitive than the system we had before. Much better, yeah. Couple of issues on the water quality front. Cryptosporidium has been detected again in Portland's Bull Run Supply. During the last month, they've had several cryptosporidium detections in the raw waters from the Bull Run intake. The detections actually started to occur again in late September. They continued for most of the month of October, and the latest results we've heard are from early November. So, obviously, we're going to continue to monitor that situation. As with the previous crypto detections that were reported back in January, February, the good news is the most recent detections are at very low levels. However, Portland is continuing to remind its customers that cryptosporidium can cause cryptosporiosis, which is a serious disease. Symptoms include diarrhea, vomiting, fever, and stomach pain, and Portland has consulted with the state and county health officials, and they believe the risk to the public is low and are not asking the general public to take any additional actions at this time. I will, you know, acknowledge the Water Bureau has been very transparent in terms of these results, and so all of the data from all of the monitoring that they've done can be found on the Water Bureau's website. And it's interesting. They've done a nice job of sharing the information.
I'm wondering if they are starting to get any pushback from their customers about that. Do people even, are people even aware?
You know, they've gotten a lot of media attention on this, and so there've been several stories in the paper. I have not heard that they have heard anything from their customers on this issue.
What, a .2 micron filter? Get those?
Joel? .2 micron. So, RO would be a better solution. I want to say that a crypto oocyst in its usual healthy form is like two to seven microns in size, but I suspect not all cryptosporidium oocysts are created equally, and there may be some that are of odd size.
Thank you.
Other water quality news, lead results. We have received the latest results from TBWD's fall 2017 lead and copper rule monitoring. The district sampled 112 homes. I don't want to steal Joel's thunder because I just found out that he's going to be talking about this a little bit, but to me, the great news is that TBWD's results were nine parts per billion. If you'll recall, the lead action level is 15 parts per billion, so we were substantially below the lead action level. That's very encouraging, and so, again, it, to me, really speaks to the value of the direction that you provided to staff last year, which is to go with a separate program, because by comparison, Portland's latest results were 17 parts per billion, which is above the lead action level. So they'll be taking some additional action that we wouldn't especially need to take. So, again, thank you for the direction to have that separate monitoring program. I think it's proving itself as an appropriate direction. Couple of quick reminders. New water rates went into effect on November 1st. Those new rates reflect the rate increase that the board approved back in August. As you know, we delay implementation of those rate increases by a couple of months to make sure that we are beyond the peak water demand season during the summer, and that gives customers a full billing cycle in all cases to be able to plan and accommodate for the new higher rate. So, new rates affect as of November 1. Very exciting. Tomorrow morning at 7:00 AM, district staff is going to hold its annual charity auction, and so staff will be raising money for a couple of local charities. Proceeds go to the charities that are selected by the employees. Last year, employees raised $5,900, and again, I think it's important to note that that is all employees' money, that there's no district money involved in this transaction or fundraising effort. Last year, we funded the Children's Cancer Association, the Oregon Food Bank, and Care Partners, which was formerly the Washington County Hospice Program. So again, there's a real commitment to fund local charities, and again, it's employees' funding. And with that, I will go to the department report, and Carey, do you want to provide an introduction?
Sure. Thank you. So, as you know, Water Quality Division is within the Engineering and Operations Department, and Joel Carey from that division is here today to provide a quick update on our structure, as well as some of the work that they do, and how they are integrated into the rest of the district's business.
Good evening again, Commissioners and President Burke. Round number two. So, presentation tonight will be about our division. I kind of consider this the ESPN highlight, so this is not everything included. This is sort of the good moments from 2017 and just some of the work that we've been accomplishing. So we'll go through this relatively quickly here. So, 2017 water quality overview. As you're aware, our group is responsible for the water quality sampling for the district to meet compliance. I kind of wanted to point out that this, during this year, we added several new monitoring locations. We've strategically looked at those sites to try and identify areas in our system that need more coverage, if you will, for representative sampling. So we have currently 134 dedicated monitoring sites for our system. To date, we've actually collected over 5,000 samples from those locations by samples that includes microbiological sampling, the sampling that meets compliance for revised total coliform rule, that's pH and chlorine and disinfection byproducts as well. So that's just kind of a snippet of some of the stuff we do at those sites. And as I said, to date, that's been 5,000 samples collected from those locations throughout TBWD's service area. We also have been monitoring our Aqua Recovery and Recovery Program. The district works with our operations and distribution staff at that facility. We keep track of a lot of volume at that site and the regulatory compliance aspects and reporting for that. That's just two of the aspects of the things that we've worked on in 2017. In addition to that, I think some of you may remember that we had some discussions a couple of years ago regarding our bulk water program. We've been making improvements to that, including the enforcement component, trying to ensure that, you know, access to water is through a permitted process and that we are not seeing either theft of water or impaired water quality through that program. So we've made some strides this year by having an online application for those customers and, again, just doing a significant more, significantly more enforcement and follow-up in the field when we do see water quality calls come in or we do suspect somebody has access to hydrant without the proper permit in place. And another notable thing I wanted to point out tonight is that we completed the Oregon Health Authority Water System Survey this year. That happens every three to five years. This, again, happened in 2017. As you'll note from the pictures there, one of the big aspects is reservoir, looking at reservoirs for deficiencies. Our group works with our distribution staff on that and OHA to make sure that we get to that survey and we identify any deficiencies that may be considered potential health risks. What I can tell you right now is that we had great results from that survey. The final report will be available in the coming weeks in our response. But again, overall, it was a very positive assessment of TBWD's system, and our regulator noted that for such a large system, we are in excellent shape. There's always things that come out of that no matter what, but again, for the size of TBWD, it was a great, it was a great survey by OHA. And as Mark alluded to, this, we'll just briefly talk about the Lead and Copper Monitoring Program. So if you recall this graph, this might look familiar to you. So, going back 10 years, these are the joint monitoring program results. These results here did include TBWD's data along with City of Portland, Gresham, and several other agencies. So as you can see, you know, towards the more recent years, we've had several exceedances within the action level under the JMP. As you'll note now, those are TBWD's individual results from the 2017 round when you, our Board of Commissioners, made, asked if we would go, go it alone, if you will, and do our own monitoring and collection on behalf of our customers to have some improved data and analytics for our system. So, again, as you can see, obviously, we're near half the levels of the JMP. This fall round, most notably, given the exceedance at 17, roughly 17 parts per billion.
Joel, what do you think, I mean, we're very low, below the action level, but it did go up a little bit in the fall of 2017. What do you think that's from?
Typically, temperature. Temperature plays a role in those factors. It's a fairly, it's a fairly consistent cycle you'll see. And again, I think, you know, one thing to note overall is just system maintenance, I think, is an important component for us. The fact that we have such a significant and strong UDF program, I think certainly plays a role in some of these corrosion mechanisms. So, but temperature's definitely the driving factor for the fall. We try and target that, that peak temperature time, too, to look at the corrosion impacts from that temperature increase. The other thing that we get involved with in our group is the boil water vents that we have from a loss-of-pressure vent, or obviously if it was from sampling-driven. Typically, you know, during, in our system, we've seen mostly those being driven by a loss-of-pressure vent, being proactive, as you'll recall, the Cooper Mountain situation. So, we kind of consider ourselves the regulatory backbone of the district. That's one of our primary objectives and roles, is that we coordinate with OHA and our other EPA, things of that nature. You know, it's really the role that we play in the background of the district a lot, is making sure that we're in compliance. During those types of events, we provide notice to the Oregon Health Authority and Washington County Public Health as well. We make sure they're engaged in the process that we're doing through the notifications and what we're proactively doing in our system operationally during those types of events. One thing you'll note, too, is that we actually developed the monitoring plans, you know, those very quick, on-the-fly monitoring plans to assess our system, to make sure that we can actually come off that kind of notice, make sure that our public health agencies are comfortable with the actions we take during those types of events. And last, just looking ahead, you know, our division is considering technology strategies and collaborative opportunities for source water protection as we make a shift to the water supply system. So that's something that we're just, we're looking out the horizon, trying to determine potential options we have, ways that we can collaborate with other agencies, to consider what the district will be needing to be do next, needing to do next during this shift in the way that the district supplies water. So, thank you. That concludes my snapshot for tonight. Do you have any questions?
I don't think so. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Excellent.
If there's no other questions, that concludes the CEO and management staff report this evening.
Okay. Thank you very much for your report and all the staff members for their fine work. World-class. Next item will be Commissioner Communications, reports of meetings attended and topics to be raised by the Commissioners. I usually start with someone else, so tonight I'll start with myself. I have a few meanings to note. Tonight's meeting, of course. Last night was the WRWC meeting where we discussed the future evolution of Olamet River Governance and the WRWC itself. I had been the Chair of WRWC, and so we had a rotation, and so I am now the Vice Chair of that body. On the 7th, in the morning, I met with Commissioner Bagnall and our CEO, where we had our monthly agenda meeting, Agenda Planning, Planning Meeting. Let's see if I can get that out. On the 7th, we had our monthly workshop. On Halloween, had a meeting with our HR Director to discuss a personnel issue, and it was an unusual meeting because being Halloween, she was dressed as a character from 101 Dalmatians, and I was dressed as Captain Kirk. So, we were talking over a desk in those costumes while we were dealing with that, so that was fun. And then on the 20th, I attended a meeting of the Oregon Taxpayer Coalition where there was discussion of the upcoming ballot measure, 101 vote, and discussion of legislation likely to be advanced in the coming short legislative session. So, those are my meetings, and so I guess at this time I'll rotate, beginning with the esteemed Commissioner Duggan.
Thank you. Really brief report. On November 2nd, I had an extended phone conversation with Amy Heinlein on our CEO evaluation, annual evaluation of Mark Newsen in preparation for the board's meeting on that in December. On the 7th, I attended the board work session as well and tonight's meeting. That's it for me.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yes, I attended the three regular meetings, the tonight's meeting, the work session, a meeting with Amy on CEO performance, and then I attended the Lowell Business Association meeting on November 9th.
Thank you, Commissioner Schmidt.
Been a slow month at the Schmidt House. I have three. Work session on the 7th, the CEO eval with Amy, and tonight's board meeting.
Thank you very much. And last but not least, Commissioner Bagnall.
I'll have many of the same meetings. I met with Amy Heinlein, the HR Director, on the 30th to discuss the CEO evaluation. I regret to say there were no costumes involved. I would have liked that. On the 7th, I met with Commissioner Burke and our CEO to do Agenda Planning, and that evening, the board work session to discuss Olamet Water Supply, staffing, supplemental budgets, and IGAs. On the 14th, I attended a West Side, bleh, sorry, West Side Economic Alliance breakfast. We talked about housing trusts as a way to alleviate some of the housing crisis experienced in California, Washington, Oregon, pretty well everywhere. And that was pretty interesting. And then, of course, tonight's meeting.
Okay, very well. Normally, this would be the time when we would take public comment, but no one has advanced a sheet to testify on anything tonight, so we'll go to the consent agenda. These items are considered to be routine and may be improved in one motion without separate discussion. Any board members may request that an item be removed by motion for discussion in separate action. Any items requested to be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion will be considered immediately after the board has approved those items which do not require discussion. There are two items on the consent agenda tonight, the October 18th, 2017 regular meeting minutes, and the work session minutes of November 7th, 2017. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So moved.
Okay. Moved, by everybody. And so we'll go to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Consent agenda is approved. That takes us into our business agenda, where we shall begin with considering approving the Special District's Insurance Services Employment Practices checklist.
So, as has been the case for several years now, the district has the opportunity to obtain a credit on our property and casualty insurance if we will complete and submit a checklist that has been requested by the Special District Insurance Services. So, Mike Jacobs, our Risk Manager, is here this evening to provide an overview of that program and ask for your approval of the checklist.
Good evening, President Burke, Commissioners. It's my pleasure to be in front of you and present the best practices again this year, and as in the past, as Mark mentioned, we have the opportunity again to receive 10% credit on our property casualty insurance contributions. So, Special District's Insurance Services offers the opportunity to achieve these best practices as a way to get credits to districts, but it also reinforces best practices that will help prevent potential liability to the pool and to the district itself. So by us achieving it, it really represents a really good thing for the district that we are following the best practices as defined by special districts. And by meeting those requirements, we also get a save on those. We currently have 8%, and with the approval of the checklist, that'll give us the additional 2% to meet that requirement. Happy to answer any questions. You had the checklist was presented along with the memo. If you have any questions about the checklist.
Are there any questions? Okay. If that's the case, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Special District's Insurance Services Employment Practices checklist.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, very good. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Okay, it is approved. Thank you very much for your good work. Next item of business is the consideration of Resolution Number 3117, approving and authorizing the Chief Executive Officer to enter into various transaction documents for purchase and sale of real property at Southwest 209th Avenue and Farmington Road.
This is an item we briefed you a couple of times in the recent past on, and we're ready to begin moving forward with the proposed purchase, and so I'll turn it over to Carey Pack to provide an overview.
Good evening. Thank you, President Burke and Commissioners. As Mark mentioned, we've been to your board about this issue a couple of times. Last time on October 3rd, and Andrew Barrett, who's one of our engineers in our office, is the project manager and was going to do the presentation in about 5:15, became very ill. So, he went home. I told him to go home, go rest, and I'm looking at these slides pretty much at the same time you are, so I apologize in advance for whatever mistake I'm going to make.
Is he going to be okay?
He's fine. He just had a really bad migraine headache, so.
I see.
I told him to drink water and lay down.
Please pass our regards to when he comes back.
Thank you. So tonight's action, we're requesting for you to consider adopting the resolution to approve and authorize CEO to enter into various transaction documents that we'll be discussing. As you might remember, the property is located at the corner of Farmington Road and 209th. It's located in the northeast corner of those intersections. It's actually made up of three tax lots as listed on the board here. Total of about 45,000 square foot. It's presently zoned as a commercially, commercial property, and it's made up of three tax lots. Back in 2016, we received an appraisal from appraisal company that rated, appraised the property at about $529,000. We have accepted the purchase and sales agreement in September 13th, and presently in process of completing a due diligence, 90-day due diligence period. And the reason that we're coming to you tonight is not, we would typically come to your board with, after the due diligence is completed, to ask for you to adopt the resolution for purchasing the property. But the due diligence period ends on December 12th, and that's prior to your next board meeting. So we're here today to talk about asking you to give the CEO the permission to approve, authorize the purchasing the property before the, after the due diligence is completed. All of the work that we've been doing since we came to you back in October 3rd includes those tasks that are listed on the board, including the environmental assessment, wetland assessment. We've completed the geotechnical boring and received reports, a draft report just this morning, in fact. We've completed the boundary survey and topographical survey associated with the property. We've seen nothing that has come up as even a yellow flag, let alone a red flag to date, but what's missing is the key critical item that's still pending, and that's the land use application process. So we have a meeting scheduled with Washington County for November 27th, where we'll be walking through the process for what exactly we can and can't do on this piece of property, and barring anything significant coming from that, we're going to probably recommend that we authorize purchase this land. You might recall, we need this property for location, to locate a district pump station. We're also, this is also a site for future turnout from the Olamet Water Supply Program that Dave's giving two thumbs up for. And also, associated with that, we need a new fluoride station. So, on the picture that's on the right of the slide, show kind of a schematic of where the location, or the size of the pump stations and the fluoride station that we would be looking to locate. We're looking at right in and right out from Farmington, as well as exiting off to the 209th on the, on the north side, going towards the north onto 209. That may or may not be allowed based on, and that's what we're going to need to find out from Washington County's pre-op session or meeting. Even if we don't have that driveway, however, we think we can sufficiently operate this facility with the conditions that we've laid out so far. This is a site map of a topo, and I would not have included this because you can't see anything on it. The thing that is really significant is there is a permanent easement retained, or slope easement on these corners of the property associated with the roadway, and we just can't have anything permanent locate, or built on that, those easements. And again, I think we'll be fine without having any permanent structure located onto it, so. So I'm hoping you're not going to ask any hard questions because Andrew's not here, but I will entertain any questions that you might have. but I will entertain any questions that you might have.
The pump station pumps.
Yes.
I'll back up. The pump station pumps from what to what?
From 385 to, up to the Cooper Mountain pump station that we already have. So it's a supplemental, it's a, another pump station that's going to allow us to have dual feed into the upper zones. Right now, the system operates with a very, only one feed up to the upper zones, and if we have one or two pump failure, we're kind of a little bit vulnerable for feeding water up into that direction.
So the construction sequence is pretty much the pump station, and then the fluoridation stuff will come when we complete the WWSA.
WW, the turnout will happen as part of the WWSP. The pump station is stationed, or I think it's programmed out to, I want to say, after the current six-year CNP.
Okay.
It's not included in our horizon right now. So we're purchasing the property because it's an opportunity for us to co-locate these two facilities and be able to have that property ready to construct when it's time to.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? No? Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt resolution number 3117.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Would we vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Okay, passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is an informational presentation. We're going to hear first about an update on the Willamette Intake Facility's intergovernmental agreement presented by the amazing General Counselor Clark Balfour.
Let me just provide a little clarification and cover for Clark on this issue. We're actually going to take both informational items at the same time because they are directly related, so we will talk, Clark will be talking about the intake facilities intergovernmental agreement as well as the purchase and sale agreements because you can't have one without the other.
Well, that'll just make him doubly amazing.
Yeah.
So that'd be great.
So with that, Clark Balfour.
Well, thank you, President Burke, Commissioners. So, hand in glove, we have two agreements and more that relate to the creation of a Willamette Intake Facilities Commission, and with that, we will have a jointly owned and operated intake facility at the current Wilsonville Treatment Site that we co-own with the City of Wilsonville. And from that, we will have a multi-party-owned intake facility. We're going to call it the Willamette Intake Facility Commission. And what you have in your packet, or at least what we provided to you back on November 7th and now available for public discussion and review, is a fairly lengthy agreement that deals with the ownership, operation, maintenance, repair, replacement, design, construction, essentially the A to Z functioning of this intake facility to be owned by six entities. It also provides that Tuolumne Valley will be the managing agency for that entity, and from that, water will come in to the, from the river to this intake facility and be split and go to the existing Willamette River Water Treatment Plant that TBWD and Wilsonville own on the site in Wilsonville, and then to another treatment plant which will be constructed farther north at the water treatment plant property that you approved the purchase of here a bit ago, and we just closed on two weeks ago, I believe. So this agreement provides for that ownership, operation, management, and with that, a couple of other things have to occur. And that's the second agreement that we have in your packet, the intake purchase and sale agreement, because Tuolumne Valley already owns the existing intake facility, and then we're going to take that, sell the existing capacity, at least a partial interest in the existing capacity, to our other partners, Hillsborough, Tigard, Sherwood, Beaverton, and then expand that facility, and expand that facility to 150 million gallons a day. So the purchase and sale agreement provides for that mechanism of purchase, buy into the existing, and then the cost sharing and the development of the expanded facilities that will get us to our ultimate Willamette project capacities. So, as Mark said earlier, we've got two agreements out. They're here for public review. We anticipate that this will be backed to you for approval sometime in January because all the other entities are now going through this similar review process. And so we need to see if there's any changes or modifications that come as a result of those other public processes, and then to be brought to you for final approval. So, there's really not much more for us to do tonight other than to respond to your questions, if you have any, based on the review that you've already undertaken.
I don't think we have any questions at this point. You've kept us very well informed.
Well, thank you.
With no questions, it really is an amazing, super amazing, I guess it would be, piece of work for your part.
Oh, well, thank you. This was, this has been a team effort. There have been four or five of us laboring over this for quite a while, and we want to see this come in for a landing, believe me. But if nobody has any other burning questions, we always stand ready to answer your questions anytime, so feel free to call.
Well, if you folks were a football team, you would all be Herschel Walkers, but work together as an incredible machine as a team, superstars.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Thank you.
Okay, that is the end of our agenda tonight, so without objection, unless anyone has anything for the good of the order, I will adjourn the meeting. Okay, we stand adjourned. Thank you very much and have a good night. And happy Thanksgiving.